Call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite the members of Boy Scout Troop 215 from all of it to join us leading the pledge. You guys would come up here in front.
Be faced us. You guys ready? The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, guys. Roll call.
Strand.
Here.
Garrick.
Here.
Grinberg.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here. Events of the week, the Vikings won. Oh. Hopefully, our team will start working normal after a few days of celebration. Health, Back to Work Mom is a sport program sponsored by the Fargo Cast Public Health and is a new resource supporting breastfeeding moms in the community as they prepare to continue breastfeeding when they go back to work. The program divides, provides breastfeeding resources via text messages and more. Two, since November, Fargo Public Health has conducted 21 Save a Life Narcon Training Sessions at schools and nonprofits in Fargo, West Fargo, Cass County. So far, they've reached 161 people. The library has several interesting upcoming programs for kids, teens, and adults, including Winter Read-a-Thon, Steam Powered Adventures Book Club for Kids, Beginning Yoga for Adults, an author visit by Alicia Underlee Nelson, the writer of North Dakota Beer: A Heady History, two kickoff events for the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten Program, and two hot beverage cozy craft sections for teens. Last week, we had a retirement in open house held for librarian Diane Briggs, who retired after more than 50 years of service and dedication to the patrons of the public library. We are looking for some employees. He may want to match that, but I'm not finding an odd takers for 50 years, but we appreciate that. Planning, this month, the engineering and planning departments, along with the FM Council of Governments, is working on submitting applications for the new State Department of Transportation program focused on downtown transportation projects. We're looking forward to this inaugural program to assist in implementing the projects for the downtown in focus, trying to figure out infrastructure and how we're going to do it in the next 10 years. Last week, the planning department and Native American Commission honored the work of Willard Yellowbird as he retired. Willard has served for the city for 17 years and just retired at this time. The Native American Commission has taken some national awards for the city of Fargo for innovative thinking. We're also deeply grateful to those in the region providing services for those in need during this recently extreme cold weather, including the Gladys Ray Shelter, the FM Coalition for Homeless, and Churches United. Also, a special thank you to the city of Delworth, who recently opened their community center for overflow and has been averaging 28 to 31 guests nightly. The Humans Relations Commission and many volunteers hosted the 17th Annual Celebration of Martin Luther King Day, with this year's events focusing on common good. The city is thankful for the people in the community who continue to give their time to make Fargo an embracing and welcoming city. Commissioner Strand was there. I think they did a really good job.
It was a great night.
Had some good musical material, and Tony, they were teaching me a little bit about rap songs, so I might get that down.
Care to try it tonight?
No, no, I'm not going to try it tonight. Order of agenda, is there a motion to approve the order of agenda, moving items seven, 17, and 21, or 23 from the consent agenda to the regular agenda for further discussion? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the January 2, 2018 regular meeting?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda items one through 25 excluding items seven, 17, and 23, which have been moved to the regular agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Strand.
Yes.
Garrick.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Move to the regular agenda. You have my recommendations for the appointments to the following boards and commissioners, Community Development Committee, and Metropolitan Council of Governments Policy Board. You have my recommendations. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve both.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Move to item seven. Sole source procurement for the purchase of automated license plate reader system. Chief Dave Todd is going to explain this to us. Have you ever wondered how cops can tell we have a license plate with a quick glance? They have help.
It's not like the old days where I had to memorize it. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Our automatic license plate reader is a system that we've had with the Fargo Police Department for almost eight years now, where we've had two vehicles equipped with automatic license plate readers. And this is in partnership with the West Fargo Police Department, who also has the same system, and we share the backend software and storage, data storage system with them. We found the system to be very beneficial in our investigations to solve crime, locate individuals who are the subject of criminal investigations, locate missing individuals or persons. We've also located numerous stolen vehicles with our license plate reader system. I've asked our intelligence detective to put me together some examples of successful use of our system. This morning, I asked him, and just off the top of his head, he was able to give me 17 incidents where we were able to solve criminal issues this year with the two systems we have. We can use this system to track vehicles leaving the area of a crime that we're responding to. We can put a license plate into the system to see if the vehicle was captured by the camera in the area of a crime. We can put all of our stolen vehicles into the system to automatically alert officers if one of them passes them by on a busy thoroughfare. And as I said before, also notify us if we're looking for a vehicle on a missing person or, you know, somebody with dementia or Alzheimer, which we occasionally have to do. The retention for the data, if it's not evidentiary, is 90 days, at which point we dump it off of the system. If it does have evidentiary value to it, then, of course, we archive it until the case is resolved. We budgeted in 2018 for three additional automated license plate readers and adding those to our fleet in addition to the two that we already have. Deputy Chief Renner was able to work with the vendor to get us a special deal on trade-ins at the two systems that are almost eight years old to update them with updated technology. I think it's a 25 percent discount, and then also able to negotiate a 20 percent discount on four additional. So I feel like we're getting a pretty good deal, and we've budgeted for approximately or close to this amount, so we feel like we're in a good spot financially for this.
Commissioner Grinberg, you brought this issue up.
Yes, thank you, Chief Todd. I was, I read the agenda like we all do, and I went, well, we'll be out of here in six minutes tonight, so I decided to put some other items on the regular agenda. But it captured my curiosity more than, you know, feeling an agenda, but I didn't know such technology existed, so I appreciate taking the time just to share a little bit.
It's mounted on squad cars. It's kind of a four-camera system, two in the front, two in the rear, and it can read the plates automatically as you pass vehicles, whether they're parked or they're passing you. And then it alerts you if it's a vehicle that you're looking for.
Mr. Garrick.
Chief, how much did you budget for in the 2017 budget?
Boy, I'm not positive. I think it was right around $80,000 for the additional spots, but I didn't actually look that up, Commissioner.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Garrick.
Yes.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item 17, easement permanent utility on Northern State's Power Company along 19th Avenue North and 7th Avenue North. Brenda Daring to explain?
And while Brenda's coming up, if you don't mind, I was the one that took it off the consent agenda, and I just, I hope, I'm going to apologize too, because I just want to take this opportunity to say, I hope we start using our power to encourage the utility company to start burying the overhead lines. Every other utility company, Midco, Cable One, Cass County Electric, everyone else buries the lines. In most parts of, the newer parts of the city, the lines are buried. In downtown, and I live in North Fargo, and if you want to get people, if I'm running for an office and I wanted to run on one issue, it would be trees, because people take trees very seriously in North Dakota. And if you drive on 19th Avenue, they look horrible. And the trimming company is just following what the utility company is telling them, but they're, it's just, it's awful. It's atrocious. And so we have to have this, and we can, we can control this, the City Commission. We can tell XL Energy, as part of your franchise agreement, we want a five-year plan for you to bury all the overhead power lines, and they will do it. And so I hope, I apologize for taking this issue and making Brenda come up, but seriously, this, it's awful. And especially in the downtown and in North Fargo and in downtown Fargo in the south, it's awful. And so I believe the people of the city, if you go to the grocery store and raise your hand and say, do you have any positive comments about the overhead power lines, you'd be standing there for quite a long time. So thank you very much for letting me vent my spleen, but I think it's an issue that most people will agree with. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor. The motion you have in front of you is for an easement for the new distribution line that will be going to the substation at 7th Avenue North, just west of University Drive. And so they do have a new distribution line that we approved last year for them to come in and to help do a backup, so we have a different substation providing power to that north side of town in case of issues that the other distribution line has to be, has a problem or is, has an issue, they can feed from the north also. This easement is on a retention pond that we're in the process of purchasing in, which is part of our 19th Avenue North project. It is currently still owned by the landowner. We're still in negotiations, but we've worked on the easement, and then we're getting the purchase for the easement, knowing that eventually that will be our land. There's any other further questions?
Any other question? Mr. Garrick.
I guess off, or off topic of this, but to what Dave was saying, does XL or Parkland South North not have a plan to start burying lines in North Fargo?
Not that I am aware of. When they do look at burying the lines, there's also work that has to be done inside on the private home to support that burying of the line. So right now, I am not aware of any plan globally to bury overhead lines.
Anything new, though? So if I already built a new home in North Fargo, for example, they do bury those lines?
Correct.
Okay. I don't disagree with you, and being a Southsider, I appreciate that we don't have those overhead lines, and I did live in an area before, I did have overheads. And I just, we can force them, that's certainly the case, we can do that, but there is a cost associated with that, and that's obviously a pass-through, just like our franchise fee is a pass-through for them. So I, I hope that we can come to an agreement other than forcing the hand, you know what I mean, of that. So I don't disagree with you, I'm just hoping we don't use a heavy hand in that scenario.
Bishop Pepcorn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, and I totally agree, but to give you an example, so like, we're doing this, upgrading the lighting, the street lighting, so we're not doing it all at once, we're doing it in sections, and so like when a street is redone or something like that, I think we can use common sense, and that's why if we had a, it's not like this all has to be done next year, but I think if we had a timeline and just said, whenever the opportunity comes, let's do it, I think we can do it with, and spend money wisely. And then just one more thing, I hope people notice this, if you look at the substations in West Fargo or wherever Cass County Electric is, they've at least made an effort to make the substations look semi-nice. The XL ones, they're nothing but raw metal. It looks awful, and so there's no attempt, and so I'm just telling you, man, if you want to get people on your side, start talking about beautification of power, and it's, seriously, we should. So I'm sorry, Brenda, for having you come up, but it's a legitimate issue, and so, and I do think we can do it without spending money unwisely. Thank you.
Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve this, and I don't want to contaminate the motion, but the rest of it is, down the road, I wish we would make an effort to start burying the overhead lines. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Perhaps with the utilities, we can have that discussion a little bit.
Sounds good.
Can I?
Mr. Strand.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Grubb, is our memorandum of understanding completed with XL? I don't recall that it's completed.
No, we're, we're in the process of working on a new franchise agreement. We don't have, never have had a memorandum of understanding. We're in the process of taking a first cut at that to address some of these things tied directly to the franchise agreement. Had that discussion with XL Energy, they're aware where we're coming from and realize that they've, they've got to come up with a plan to get overhead underground.
Thank you.
So we're pursuing that.
Mr. Pepcorn.
Just one more thing, I totally get the large overhead lines, the major lines, those have to be, but the rest of it, they would rather not. They'd rather leave it the way it is, but, because it's going to cost money to bury them, but, but I think that if we have a plan, I think that they'll, they'll work with us, and it'll all work out, so thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Garrick.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Go to public hearing. Application filed by Solid Comfort for property tax exemption on project located at 3949 37th Avenue South, which the applicant will use the operation manufacturing woodcase good for the hospitality industry. Ben Hushka to explain. This already went through tax exempt committee.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yes, this is an expansion of their operation that has been in town for a number of years. They did consider several locations, two of which would be outside of Fargo. This is a request for a five-year, 100 percent property tax exemption for the expansion. According to the nature of the expansion, the jobs added, the salaries of the jobs, it does meet our current policy on our 100-point system. It did reach the 100 points, and Tax Review recommends the approval of the request. The applicant is present if you have any questions.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak for this tax exemption? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak? Do you want to speak?
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. I am Rick LaLiberty. I'm the CFO of Solid Comfort, and I'm accompanied by Jason Larkin, the President of Solid Comfort. I'd like to thank this Commission for its time and consideration of our property tax exemption application. I guess to highlight a couple of pieces of information that complement what Ben had shared, is Solid Comfort is a 37-year-old company, second generation. This project would go, excuse me, this property tax exemption would go a significant way towards allowing us to grow at our existing location. We have considered a couple of different options, south of town, west of town. We would view this exemption as a significant investment that would allow us to contribute towards buildings, facilities, job creation, and investment in technology. We're looking at adding in the first couple of years after the expansion roughly 22 jobs within the first five years, close to 50 jobs. Solid Comfort has grown at 16 percent a year from 2013 to 2017. Conservative estimates have us growing at 15 percent over the next three to four years.
Anybody have a question? Mr. Garrick.
Rick, first, thank you for being in Fargo for so long, and thank you for growing here. If you didn't get the exemption tonight, would you move out of Fargo?
It'd be difficult at this point for us to commit to not exploring other options. As I shared, we are exploring options west of town, south of town. This exemption would be a significant investment to allow us to grow where we are and create jobs at our current location.
Sure. And just in looking at the paperwork, just based on this expansion, you're going to make $4 million in the next five years, based on the expansion. The exemption is for $175,000. So I think the average person looking at it would say it would be foolish to go somewhere else. If you were to go south of town, for example, you'd be paying specials that will probably equate to that amount of money, based on the size of your building. So for the other Commissioners, you know, we've been, we heard here, which is great, that you would hire up to 40 or it was a 50 new jobs in the next five years. If that doesn't happen, we don't have currently any way to claw back those dollars based on that promise. So my, my point here tonight is that you're growing here in Fargo because it's the best place for you. We have the workforce for you. You're a longtime company for a good reason, and I appreciate that you've been here for a long time. But for me, the exemption doesn't mean, isn't the make or break for you, it's a bonus, which you, as a smart business person, are asking for. We will probably give it to you, but I think that the Commissioners here should take a second look at, is this required? Do we need to be doing this in order to have expansion in Fargo?
Any other questions? Mr. Grinberg.
Well, just a comment, appreciate your commitment, appreciate you adding jobs. Incentives have been in place for many years in North Dakota, and I've always been a supporter of the primary sector expansion, and you are a primary sector company, you're in manufacturing, and we want to continue to see you grow. So I plan on supporting your request. But also, just for the record, last week at the State of the Cities, there were two significant events that took place. One was his rap song. The second was a texting poll of 1,000 people in the business community, and 70 percent said, continue the incentive policy that we have, we support it as a business community. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious relative to Commissioner Garrick's question. Commissioner Pepcorn, didn't, wasn't the new policy, didn't we include a but-for policy into the tax exempt review for their?
Yep.
And what was, what did that mean, and how did that impact, for example?
Well, that's, I mean, when he, when he asked the question, basically, would you, if you didn't get this incentive, would you still come here? And now, basically, what he basically said was, they would look at other cities, and that's what they're doing. And I'm sure you already know this, John, we're in competition all day, every day. We love our sister cities, Morehead, West Fargo, Wapentin, Grand Forks, but they're our competition. And every business, you're a business owner, so was I, you look at your competition, that's just the way of the world. And so we love having Solid Comfort in Fargo. It's a, it's an organic, homegrown business, and I don't know if you want to talk a little bit, but I wish you would, about you're doing a lot of supplying hotels, and that's kind of a growing part of your business. It's exciting, and we want them to grow. And to keep organic ones, that's, that's, that's our secret sauce. It's hard enough to recruit new ones. Mark, you can talk about, Mark Vox can talk us about getting outside, the homegrown ones, we don't want to lose those. So if you don't mind talking a little bit, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, to that point, you know, we manufacture case goods for the hospitality industry. We manufacture custom products for premier brands such as Marriott, Hilton, Best Western, and My Place.
Mr. Garrick.
So I guess my point is, is that, would we rather have, you're 37 years in Fargo, right? So over the next 37 years that you'll be here, would you, and this is a rhetorical question, you'll have to answer it, would you rather have a 7, or 10, or 15, or 20 percent lower property tax rate versus a five-year exemption where year after year, we're increasing, you know, we're increasing how much you have to pay? So I think the average business owner can say, that wants to be here for the long term, can say, I would rather have a lower percent over the next 20 years versus a 5 percent exemption on the front end, and then as my property value goes up, and I'm paying more, I'm paying more, and incentives add up over the city, and as you're paying taxes, you're paying for the people's incentives. So what I'm, it's not an all or sum, it's, if we, if we stop giving incentives, we can lower property taxes for everybody, take in the same amount as the city, and that's how you lower them over the long term. And I think a long-term company of 37 years, growing in the city of Fargo, who hopes to be here another 37 years, can appreciate that we want lower taxes over the long term and not short-term incentives for five years or for 10 years that entice. So I think the enticement is, over the long term, having lower property taxes.
When we look at our incentives in the commercial market, what's happened lately is that we're increasing amount of commercial market in the city of Fargo. So before, it used to be the residential paid 51 percent of the tax bill and commercial paid 49. Now, with the growth we've had and the tax exempt push and all the different things we've had in the community, 53 percent of the property taxes are paid by commercial, 47 is paid by residential. This is another example. As you grow, this will help that, also you're hiring people to work for your company as well. We think that has been a positive impact on the city of Fargo and continues to be that, so I think this tax exemption is very well put and goes to a good cause. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Actually, I'll make the motion.
Yes.
Should we do that first?
Yes.
Okay. Approval of a five-year, 100 percent exemption on the additional project improvements for the expansion of Solid Comfort Incorporated at 3949 37th Avenue South.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mayor, I'm just having a flashback to the early 80s when Solid Comfort was down on South University Drive, and I'm, you were pretty new then, and I got a couch set that was the heaviest furniture I ever owned in my life. And it went to New York and came back to North Dakota, and I don't know where it ended up, but it would look its own truck. But I remember the quality of your product and the quality of your company, and it's nice to have something like that locally.
Well, it's still made heavy in its quality.
Mal, roll call vote.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Garrick.
No.
Mahoney.
Aye. Thank you. Last item, item 23, selection of preferred contract incentive for 13th Avenue South Street Construction Project, District BR 18 C1. We're going to have Jeremy Gordon explain.
All right, so I get the back cleanup, just like Stefan Diggs the other night, right?
Yeah.
With those in the audience don't know, is I wore my number 22 jersey to work today, so I took it off before some important meetings, so, that's right. I don't know, I don't know where that came from, but I'm all for it. I couldn't sleep Sunday night or even yesterday, so I'm back on the wagon today.
Maybe the Boy Scouts can explain where a skull came from.
They could, they could explain what that is to my mother as well. All right, so getting to the issue at hand. So this year, next commission meeting, actually, you guys are going to be approving our bid docs for the reconstruction of 13th Avenue here. These are my CAD skills. It's a shared project with West Fargo. It's basically on a section-lined road, 13th Avenue, and it's basically a mile long. It'll be 4,000 feet, but short a block on each side of 45th Street and 9th Street. So Apex Engineering is actively doing the design. We're going to have 95 percent plans, meetings here in the next 10 days. And on a project that's on a section-lined road and has, is as high-profile as this, we like to include incentives. This one is a little bit interesting in that half of it is, it's basically 50/50 with West Fargo. And when we brought it to the Public Works Committee, their staff had said that they're not interested in incentives, but since the Public Works Committee, the Mayors have spoken, and they are on board with an incentive. So what we came up with at our Public Works is, on a role like this, based on $10 to $12 million, we would usually put $10, $10,000 a day with a 30-day max on the maximum amount they could receive. So on this project, it'd be about 3 percent if we went with that. That's one option. Another option is if West Fargo isn't interested, then we could still do what we would normally do, and it would be half of that, at $15,000, $5,000 a day, up to $150,000 max, or we could do no incentive. So I am open to any discussion.
So we've used incentive before, and I think, Mr. Pepcorn can speak to 19th Avenue, which was pretty much a disaster, where a lot of your businesses lost money and had a lot of difficulties, and I think they called in all the time. But we've had 32nd Avenue got finished quicker, and 13th Avenue, the last time by West Acres, got done quicker, and it seems that the public much more likes that. And the engineering department has decided this tactic, trying to do a shared incentive policy, which usually works, and we're fortunate to have West Fargo pick up half of it, so it seems like it would be a good deal for us. Commissioner Garrick.
I just want to point out, this is the one kind of incentive that I'm really behind. So I remember before I was Commissioner, reading the paper, Dave angry about the 19th Avenue deal, and these incentives have seemed to fix a lot of that problem. So it is a good deal, it gives the jobs done on a timeline, and often faster than the timeline. So I do like these kinds of incentives.
Progress.
Well, you're supposed to come my way.
So I'm just, I'm just, what is the preferred contract incentive? You mentioned two or three options, so right now we're flexible, or?
The preferred would be the $10,000 a day up to a 30-day max. That's what we would do if it was 100% city Fargo. And that's enough money to, you know, on a $10 to $12 million contract, that gets the prime contractor interested. If you have a low amount, there, it's not, doesn't matter much to them. So this is what we've been using historically on a project this scale.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you. I remember when the 19th Avenue discussion went on, and I wasn't on the same page as others were necessarily. My view is that it's our job to manage the bid letting and manage the contracts and make sure people are up to the task they contracted to do. And I think that's our job, you know, so when, and how we manage contracts and keep them on a timeline, I believe that's the city's responsibility, or other government subdivisions. So I'm not crazy about incentives for doing a job you said you were going to do and get it done on time. I think that's just what we should expect, and it should be a requirement. So I'm not crazy about incentives for that. I, you know, so we might be on the other side of this one. I'll make the motion, no incentives.
No incentive?
To get that on the table.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing no second, can I have a different motion?
A move to approve.
And is this the 50/50 split, Jerry?
Yes.
Second.
Moved in second.